It's 5:30. I'd like to start on time. So I just want to, the county council has generated this meeting. It is the sheriff's meeting. Lord knows I don't interfere with the sheriff. I'm Anna Marie Tabernick, Vice Sheriff County Council, and I represent District Six, which is most of Sun City and all the way down to New Riverside on 170. Ms. Brown?
My name is Paula Brown, and I represent District Eight, which is the east side of 278.
Tom Reitz, I represent District Eleven.
Is it on now? Ah, Tom Reitz, District Eleven, most of Hilton Head. Thanks for being here. We appreciate it.
So we'd like to welcome you. We're so glad you came out for this very important topic. The conversation will run 5:30 to 6:30, and I turn it over to the sheriff. It is all his.
Thank you. Everyone hear me okay? We've been up here playing with microphones, and I knew that would probably get some feedback.
That's what we used about. Parameters and rules on July 8th, while we were in our Beaufort meeting, we're going to do the same thing today. Well, that's a lot better. Okay, there are, everyone hear me? Okay, we know, because I know a lot of people in the room, I know a lot of people in here are going to be opposed to the 287G program. I understand that. And there are going to be those that are in favor. But let's keep in mind, this is an educational meeting. I want to hear from you. Hopefully you'll want to hear from me. We're going to keep it friendly. Those that are in favor versus those that are opposed, be respectful to everyone, be respectful to everyone's time, and then we can run this thing until 6:30 without any problems. Just remember, if you're making a statement, or if you're asking a question, be respectful of everyone else's time, because if you go on and on and on, then you're taking up time from someone else, okay? I would also ask that, everyone in here watch the news? You haven't seen a lot of news. You've seen a lot of news here over the past couple of weeks from different news stations. I know Chloe wrote a couple of articles. I know that Tony's done the same thing. And it's been, it was more and more so related to the July 8th meeting. But when you're making a statement, or if you're asking a question, please try to keep it in Beaufort County, South Carolina, okay? Not something that you saw on the news that happened in LA, or happened in New York, or happened somewhere else. Even if it happened in Jasper County, that's so far away from my jurisdiction. My jurisdiction's Beaufort County, 923 square miles. That I can do something about, but I don't have jurisdiction in other counties or other states, so let's try to keep it for Beaufort County, okay? And that way we can save some time. I watch the news. I just want to let you all know, if you're going to make statements about something that happened in California, I probably have already seen it, and the majority of people in this room have too. So, we're going to start out with just a little bit of an educational opportunity to learn how the federal system works versus the state system, and how we either work together, or we don't work together at all, and what jurisdictions are when we talk about federal jurisdictions related to state jurisdictions. Daniel Gorley, who is our staff attorney, our general counsel at the sheriff's office, is going to take a few minutes and just talk about a couple of things. That way you'll have some understanding on the front end of what we're going to talk about. Daniel?
Thank you, Sheriff. Everybody hear me all right? All right. So Sheriff Tanner received a lot of questions last time in our July 8th meeting regarding what, if anything, BCSO is going to do if ICE comes down to Beaufort County and has immigration operations. And I just want to be perfectly clear that if and when that were to occur, BCSO legally is not allowed to obstruct or interfere with any federal operation taking place in Beaufort County. We will be put in handcuffs. Just as Sheriff Tanner said, I watch the news too. Everybody's seen the news going around of people interfering or obstructing with ICE operations, and they're being prosecuted. We don't have immunity to interfere with any sort of federal operation taking place in Beaufort County. That's constitutional law. That's Federal Supremacy Clause, Article Six, Clause Two. All right? So if there's going to be a question tonight about what is BCSO going to do when ICE, if ICE were to ever come to Beaufort County and conduct an immigration operation, we can't do anything. Now Sheriff Tanner said at the last meeting, if individuals show up who are masked without a name tag, we will attempt to verify, we will verify, that there is some sort of federal operation going on in Beaufort County. But to that point, one of the collateral benefits, if we were to sign up with 287G, is that we have a seat at the table with the federal government regarding any possible immigration operations taking place in Beaufort County. That's beneficial for two reasons. One, we're going to be aware of what's taking place within Beaufort County. We'll know beforehand, before any operation begins. And two, we'll have input into that operation. We'll be able to provide local knowledge about how to operate safely for all citizens of Beaufort County, and make sure that the operation that ICE or any other federal agency that's occurring here in Beaufort County is done in the safest manner possible. If we don't have a seat at the table, we're not going to be aware of what ICE is coming down to do in Beaufort County. We will be acting after the fact. All right? So I just want to be clear, if any questions come up regarding what is BCSO going to do, we are limited. All right? Thank you, Sheriff Tanner.
If anyone's taken the opportunity, I mean, you can Google 287G, and you can get all the information that pertains to the three programs. You have a jail program, and you have a warrants program, and you have a task force program. Well, I don't run to jail in Beaufort County. Beaufort County government, matter of fact, these folks sitting up here, and Michael Moore, the county administrator, they run to jail. The jail's been operational with notifications to immigration enforcement since 2012. That's been something that's been ongoing for many, many years. And between 2008 and 2012, we had, the sheriff's office had a 287G task force. We operated that task force for four years. I had five deputies that were certified and trained by immigration enforcement, and their program worked well. Shortly after that program, there was only 18 task force in the country, and Beaufort County happened to have one of them. The program worked. Our relationship with ICE was fantastic. We had a seat at the table, so our opinion mattered in Beaufort County when things were planned. And I had a lot of input on what should and should not be done. And the program worked, and was successful. I noticed some comparisons, I think there was some comparisons on July 8th about Beaufort County versus Charleston County, and those type things. Those are jail issues. They're difficult for me to respond to, because I've never run to jail, and quite frankly, Tab don't plan to. So, now, the warrant program is nothing but a program where immigration enforcement will send court documents, and if I had a deputy that was a part of the 287G warrants program, then that deputy would be responsible for making sure those documents were served. The task force program is a program like we had before, where it gives us the opportunity to do more as far as the investigative arm of what we do in law enforcement. So if we're working any kind of crime, if you're working a homicide, or burglary, or armed robbery, or whatever the case may be, and we have some of interest, like we do in all cases, there's a lot we can find out through NCIC, which is FBI program. And then, of course, there are two other programs. It's called Ident and Eagle. So NCIC is easy, because we are certified on the House. And the Ident and Eagle are the immigration programs that if we don't, if we're not a part of that program, we do not have access to it. So if we've got a suspect that we're investigating that has committed a crime here in Beaufort County, South Carolina, and we start doing background checks, and we start vetting all of those that we think are involved in, then what the Ident program does, it gives us a lot of information about that person that's not in NCIC. They never have been entered in the NCIC. They are in a separate program, so it's important for us to have that technology. I am scheduling right now, well, I haven't had, I don't have my MOU yet. I expect that sometime this week, and once I get it, then I will turn it over to my general counsel, and then my general counsel will review it. And if everything looks right, or if I have questions, then I'll make those contacts, and then we'll make sure we're working out. I'm only looking at right now, probably a total of two. I'm not required to have a certain number of deputies, even though it may sound like you need a half dozen or a dozen, because it's a task force program, I'm not required to have more than one. So right now, I'm looking at not more than two. So those officers that are identified, they have primary jobs every day. Their secondary responsibility is associated with immigration enforcement, and their job will be to work. And they will be supervised by the Department of Defense out of Charleston. So that is the task force model that we're seeking. But we know the benefits from '08 to '12, the benefits are better now than then, because the technology's improved, and the data banks, and all the other information that we can get is there. I think there are, we just had a sheriff's conference in Myrtle Beach last week, and I think we're somewhere in the mid twenties with either sheriff's offices or police departments, and I think there's like five police departments in South Carolina, and the others are sheriff's offices that have already begun the 287G program in their counties. A lot of those programs are jail programs, and because there are a lot of sheriffs in South Carolina that still run to jail. SLED, the state law enforcement division, has 40 agents at SLED that are assigned to their that are assigned to their immigration enforcement unit. And they're working drug trafficking cases, human trafficking cases, and cases that are identified, and they have 40 agents. Forty agents in 46 counties in South Carolina is not much coverage. So of course, the immigration enforcement units that I thought through were trying to increase those numbers of available law enforcement officers to help them do what they do every day. But, and the reality to it all of it is, is like we did many years ago, we're looking for the worst of the worst. And those are the things that will occupy our time. So the MOU will be here hopefully this week. It'll get sent over, like I said earlier, and then we'll work from there. Do we have questions or brief comments about things that you're concerned about concerning Beaufort County, South Carolina? If you do, if we could just come up here to the middle? Or let me know, if this thing starts going haywire, I might have to go back. But I want you to stand up, and I'll give you the microphone.
Okay. I'm not sure about that. My name is Rita Conrad. I live in the Crescent, which is in the county as opposed to town. My question is about the cost from the county. The federal government has put $140 billion against this effort. And I kind of think that another red cent is unnecessary.
There's, we're going to figure this thing out, guys? This microphone? Just let me scream to the top of my lungs. How you doing? Alright, you got primary, secondary? Is it on now?
That should do it.
Hand that to him and grab it.
The secondary cost is caused, what secondary responsibilities are?
Sheriff, I think the laveller mic on your pocket, please.
I don't have it. So you thought it was me all along? The secondary cost would be the cost of a deputy sheriff, salary, uniform, vehicles, and all the other things that they get. It's right around $135,000. But that officer is doing multiple tasks. This is not a primary program. This is a secondary program. So that officer could be doing any other job during the day, and be doing this also as part of his duties or her duties during that same part of the day. So the training and all the technology and all the equipment that we get doesn't cost us anything. They provide that to us because we have a contract with them, and we're a part of that program. So there's no cost associated with it. What you're hearing or what you've heard about this is going to cost millions of dollars, or hundreds of thousands of dollars, just not, it's not true at all. That's not a fact. Well, thank you for your view. Anyone else?
You look like you've got a great question.
I want to know if you receive any funding from the feds to underwrite this program?
No, I mean, they train us, they fund all the training, they fund all the equipment associated with the program, but there's no, we're not getting, we're not making money off of this program. But it's not a full-time position. See, they're doing part-time work. So, you know, I've got, and look, just to make sure, I don't want to step on you too. Make sure you know that I've got a deputy sheriff that's a DEA agent. I've got a deputy sheriff that's an FBI agent. But they're not full-time FBI. They're not full-time DEA. But they have jurisdiction, limited jurisdiction, and working those federal cases, working alongside of the FBI and the DEA. And this is going to be the same thing here. It's another MOU, another contract to work alongside immigration enforcement. But the value, again, I'll say this again, this is important for you to understand. I know Daniel mentioned it, and I talked about it last week, or two weeks ago. We do not have an opinion on how ICE conducts any work in Beaufort County if I'm not sitting at the table. It's important that we're part of the program. If we threw, if we just threw our hands up and looked at it like most sanctuary cities, and then, you know what, they're going to do whatever the hell they want to do, and there's nothing we can do about it. It's important that we have a seat at the table, and we're going to have that seat at the table. And it's going to happen probably within the next couple of months. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you for that. I really appreciate it. My question is, can you give us an example of what that meeting looks like? What does it sound like? How many people are there? What are you guys saying when you're, have you not had the conversation yet? Would this be a first, participating in that conversation?
As soon as we get everything signed up, then those meetings, yeah. Those meetings.
Hasn't been a meeting yet?
No, has not.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Could you tell the people how many deputies you have? To put it in perspective, you'll be one of these.
Right now, certified, 250. 250, and I want to train two. So, yes, ma'am?
I'm a retired teacher, so I have no expertise in law enforcement. What I understand, though, is 287G, and then there's 287G task force.
No, it's 287G, three programs. You have a jail, you have a warrant, and then you have a task force.
Okay, so with the task force, is it true that law enforcement officers would be able to detain someone who has not committed a crime?
All three programs allowed up. And that's two different sides of ICE. You understand, ICE has two different sides. They have what they call DRO. That's detention and removal. And then they have an investigative side, which is what we do. So detention and removal, they stay busy all day, every day. And they mainly work with the jail program. Detention and removal is more of a jail part of it than it is on the investigative side.
So it's not a crime to be here illegally?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That is a hurdle a lot of people need to get over because that's holding you back from understanding how these programs work. You cannot excuse the fact that you came, look, I spoke to a Border Patrol agent today that spent many, many years in San Diego. And in my conversations with him, I said, well, you know, how many years? How many tours did you have in San Diego? And he had three, and he was just there. Let me give you an example, okay? It's my meeting, let me give you an example of this, because I think it's important that you know this. And I said, a lot of people ask different questions. I shared with him the questions that came from July 8th. And it's on YouTube, so he can go and watch it, just like you'll watch this one. Here's an example. We don't, if you want to drive a car in Beaufort County, South Carolina, you got to have a driver's license. I'm assuming all of you in here have a driver's license. And if your driver's license is suspended, or for, because of a DUI, or not paying your taxes, or it just expired, you don't have one, and you go out here and operate a motor vehicle, you're going to be held accountable for doing that. His example that he gave on the border is quite compelling because as a Border Patrol agent, one of his jobs were to greet those that were coming into country, and to determine all the necessary information, vetting, the vetting process, background, all of that stuff. Here's the example I want to give. He said that there were hundreds, hundreds of immigrants coming in to the border, standing for hours on end, doing their paperwork as required under the law. And then there's others that come to this country a different way, either with coyote, or they come with a visa, and they overstayed a visa, and when the visa expires, they just decide they're not leaving. All of those things will be dealt with, I'm assuming, independently. But the reality is this, do not excuse the fact that illegal entry into the United States is a federal crime. And you've got to get beyond that in order for us to do what we need to do. And this kind, look, the whole part of this, now, and I'm not going to talk politics because politics is not why we're here, okay? But homeland security is the reason this program is successful for us. It's very important. We're not just talking about one country. We're talking about multiple countries. We're talking about, and the influx of multiple countries in Beaufort County, South Carolina, is present here today. And there are people in this county that have gone unvetted. We know nothing about them. We know nothing about their backgrounds. We know nothing about their criminal history. Daniel has looked up some of that information, and we know a lot more about some of the folks that are either in our jail or have been criminally charged. And those things are important for our safety in Beaufort County. And I mean, and those are the things that we're working with and in concert with immigration, not only with immigration enforcement, but the FBI, DEA, ATF, and the Marshal Service. I mean, those things, those things we do every day. Yes, ma'am?
You're talking about a very specific subset of immigrants. But right now, there is all sorts of issues at the federal level where people lose their immigration status. So those folks who came here under temporary protective status, TPS, that's a program for Venezuelan immigrants, Cubans, they came here, they were vetted, and they have lost their status. And they will see these people, these orders, or they have been, and then they're presented, or they have been, and they're presented. And so my question to you is, in the melee of the federal programs going in and out, in and out, because Venezuelans have lost their TPS, they got it back twice this year. So what is going to happen in this county, when the immigration status that they did get vetted for is lost? Are your agents then going to participate in finding those people and taking them away as they've already been vetted, like you said?
I mean, that's a good question, but I don't know the answer to it because one... Let me give you a chance to finish your comment, because I didn't hear it.
I said, I think you really need to know the answer to that if you're going to do this.
Well...
I've got neighbors from countries that are all through TPS.
Yeah.
They've been taken away and gotten back and taken away. And what's going to happen when they're trying to get that card that they got vetted for? I mean, who's their status?
Well, I mean, what I'm telling you, that's a good question. The problem is, I can't give you an answer on it. I'm not a part of the program yet. We haven't signed a contract, and we're not in the process of getting the agents trained or anything, the deputies trained or anything. The information will be forthcoming. I don't know about those particular circumstances you're talking about. I don't know why they would lose their status. I don't know, I don't have information on that. So as we progress down the road, call me and remind me again, and I'll give you the answer. But I just, I don't know the answer right now. We're not a part of the program yet. Yes, sir?
My name is Sebastian Hernandez. I'm an immigration attorney here in Bluffton, South Carolina. Sheriff, before I ask my question, I just wanted to follow up with your analogy with San Diego. If we followed that same analogy of the people waiting, hundreds of people waiting in line, I feel it's important that you know that ICE has issued memos treating every immigrant as a priority for removal. That means the people that came in without inspection, and that means all the people that waited in line, that would be within your county, would be treated with priority for removal.
Well, let me, how do you know that?
ICE memos. ICE has issued the memos. They're public. It's public knowledge. Yeah. But now for my question. Does your department use the law, the Department of Homeland Security's Law Enforcement Support Center? Okay, well, the reason why I ask that is because you stated that the reason for this, or at least one of the major reasons for this, is to get access to information. Ident, to get access to...
You got to hand it back?
Sorry. To get access to Ident, to get access to NCIC, to get access to the Eagle system. The Department of Homeland Security's Law Enforcement Support Center is a real-time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week service that was created to assist law enforcement agencies in gathering all the information already provided by Ident and Eagle. And you don't need to have 287G in order to access that info. So I bring it up because you mentioned that you wanted to do this because you couldn't get access to that info, but you do have the access to it.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you have, did you have a question?
I'm not sure if you're going to...
He didn't ask a question. Here, there's no, if you're going to make a statement, make a statement, but the part of the 287G task force for us is to have two deputies that are certified immigration enforcement agents, okay? And there's no follow-up on this. That's the reason we're doing the program. And a part of those officers being trained as immigration enforcement agents not only gives them the training that they need to assist, look, I want deputy sheriffs that are a part of the program, I want them to completely understand their function, their lawful function in that program. I don't have any deputy sheriffs at the sheriff's office that know anything about immigration law. But the program gives us the opportunity not only to be a part of the program, to understand it, and properly enforce it, if in fact, that's the process we take. But it also gives us the ability, not to, I don't want to have to call someone, and then maybe I'll get a response then, maybe I won't. Maybe I'll need to call the Charleston office, maybe I'll need to call another office, give them the information I need. As, you know, it's just like a DNA lab, or, you know, or any other thing that we do. We need to do things in real time. Given those deputies, the ability to research the information they need to research in real time is important for us when it comes to public safety. I know what you're saying.
If I could ask the question regarding...
And I'm sure that there are thousands of law enforcement agencies throughout the country that are using that program. I'm sure there is, and I'm sure it's a benefit to them.
Yeah, so my question regarding LES C is, why can't you have those two officers tasked with communicating with LES C to get real-time communication?
They'll be able to do that too, but they'll be trained certified immigration officers.
It quite literally says real-time communication, and you just stated that's what you want. So I think we can achieve a situation where you get what you want, and it doesn't come at the expense of what the community's concerned about. It would be a win-win for your department and for the community.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You want to pass the mic?
Good evening. I'm sheriff and county council. I'm here today as a resident of Beaufort County, as a voter, as a taxpayer, and as a businesswoman, both here in Beaufort County and Jasper County. I hear all, you know, what you guys explained in regards to this 287G. But how is seeding in, how is having a seat going to help me? I will not be told, hey Claudia, ICE is going to have operations in your home. We'll be there just to make sure everything is running okay. You guys just said you can't interfere. So there's, that really does not help us. What helps us is, have you, has everyone sat down and seen how this will affect us, our economy? And as a tax accountant, I'm going to say that I have taxpayers who don't have social security, and they pay a fair, large amount of taxes into South Carolina, not including those residents who've bought homes in this county and pay automatic 6% taxes on their homes because they don't have a social security. That is, and you might ask yourself, how will that affect us? Well, guess what? There's going to be a lot of fear. People are going to start moving out, okay? Our homes are being built, guess by whom? Immigrants. How do I know that? Because I'm in that industry as well. And I have a picture right here of immigrants repairing Beaufort County Detention Center. So, you know, and I found that very, you know, I was, I was, I know that happens, but I was just like, wow, Beaufort County Detention Center. Yes, it's illegal to be in this country. It's a crime according to the federal law. However, these are the people that are mowing the lawn. However, these are the people that are mowing lawns. Thank to them, when we sit down in a restaurant, okay, we can have food on time. And, and coming from, from a businesswoman, I can tell you the workforce is really, has been really horrible. So today's heat, a lot of these immigrants who are out there doing our roofs, building our homes, doing all that, we are going to force those people out of here? Who are going to build our homes? Who is going to mow our lawns? Who are going to clean our hotels? This is a tourist place. So I just ask county council to please analyze that. Analyze the, you know, the economy and every, all, everyone here who is involved to analyze that part of it.
Let me speak, let me speak to the county council part. As was stated in the beginning, this is with the sheriff's purview. County council simply approves the budget. We don't tell the sheriff what to do. We don't analyze, we don't govern how he spends his money. So your questions are directed to the sheriff, not county council. He is an elected official. You all elect him. He's a constitutional officer. We fund the budget. We don't tell him what to do.
Take that one out of the purview.
I understand that part, and I apologize if I addressed you, but however, county council also does our laws. So, you know, as, as a taxpayer, you know, I am concerned that our, my tax dollars are going towards illegal immigrants who, on your page as well, on your booking page, if I go through that, I mean, yes, there were some illegal immigrants on ICE hold for DUI, and hey, they have to pay their, their share. However, a majority of them, majority of detainees, were not immigrants. So my question is, why are we going after these immigrants and not after the true criminals who are, you know, stealing from our community, breaking into our homes, into our cars, into our businesses? Those are the people we need to go after.
And, and we do that every day.
But now we're, we are, I feel that we are focusing on something else, and, I mean, there's a lot of cases that I looked up that are still unsolved.
Yeah, there's a lot of cases unsolved.
Okay, so why not concentrate on those cases?
We are, every day. You know, don't, don't try to make it sound okay. You bring up the economy, you bring up all these other things about food on the table and restaurant service and all this other stuff. You're taking an opportunity to make it appear like there's some convenience to all of this, but in reality, I'm a sheriff. My job is law enforcement. And so I go about my day looking for tools for my toolbox to make sure that I can make Beaufort County as safe as I possibly can. If I find a tool that benefits public safety in Beaufort County, I look into it, I invest my time, and if it's worthy, as if it's a worthy tool for this county, then I invest in that. My investment in this program is, I'll tell you again, 287G task force will be a part of Beaufort County law enforcement, probably in the next couple of months, and we're looking forward to the partnership. And I'm also looking forward to have a seat at the table, not only with the great staff that we have at the sheriff's office, and empathy, we're not taking empathy out of the equation, but don't give good excuses for bad things that have already happened. You can't. Now, let me, the same thing, and I'll ask the immigration lawyer. You know, if you're an immigration lawyer, how many people have you recommended, you gave me plenty of recommendations, but how many unlawful immigrants have you recommended to, to self-deport, go back to whatever country they came from, and I'm not picking on any particular country, do the right thing and return to the United States? How many people have you done that to? I mean, and I'm, and I'm being serious. How many, is it, is it a weekly thing, a daily thing? Do you charge a fee? I mean, how is this working?
Yeah, so immigration is very complex. And for, for a lot of the people...
Yeah, I understand that.
For, for a lot of the people that may be in this country, you'd be surprised to learn that I've been able to help people that were here illegally for 20 years get their green cards.
Okay.
And that's because over time, they qualify for different benefits.
Right.
The issue is that when ICE gets involved, they don't care if you have a process. They don't care if you already paid your fees. They don't care if you're about to get your green card, if you have U.S. citizen children. As I stated at the beginning of my question initially, everybody's being treated as a priority. And whenever you start using this program, it becomes very, you start trading a very fine line because the moment ICE makes contact with people, they're going to treat them all the same, whether they have criminal history or not. And that's why it's such a concern to the community, and that's why I kept referencing LES C, because you can achieve this without ICE having to get involved. You can get the community safe and get those tools in your toolbox without needing to actually sign an agreement.
You know, I am hoping, I am hoping that a part of this being connected to 287G encourages those. You can't excuse the fact that you're here illegally. You've got to deal with that issue. And I've had multiple meetings, not only like July 8th and the day, I've had multiple meetings at a lot of churches in Beaufort County. And the reality to this is all, if, if you have a concern about immigration in Beaufort County, South Carolina, and you understand the process, then volunteer your time and help someone that you know that's here illegally do the right thing, get the paperwork done. If they need to self-deport, self-deport. We're not disrupting families by doing law enforcement. You're disrupting your own family by being here illegally and not doing something about it before immigration enforcement has to get involved. And I mean, and honestly, at the end of the day, that's reality. But, and I appreciate, if you've, if you're helping people, thank you for doing that. Was there a question over here, or three?
So I'd just like some clarification on a comment that you gave to WTOC newspaper a couple of weeks ago. And in this regards to, I mean, because safety for your entire community, that's your priority, right, sir? Right? So you, I mean, you stood in front of a camera, and you said, "I don't care how they do it or how it's done. My job is to make sure that my toolbox is full of everything. I need to make this county safe." Does that, you remember that? You remember saying that?
I mean, I can go back and look, but it sounds, sounds close.
Oh, cool. Well, I got it right down right here. So let's say, if safety...
I don't know, I think I sounded better than that, but go ahead. You're a little gruff.
Oh, you know, you know...
A little mean. Go ahead.
Oh, well, thanks for cutting me off. But anyway, so if, you know, if safety really is your priority, sir, I mean, let's just say a, a parent, a parent's at an immigration appointment, they have their green card, okay? Let's say an ICE officer who racially profiles her, she gets picked up and taken from her children. Do you care about that? Let's say if members of your community, they're sent to foreign countries they have zero connection to, do you care about that, sir? And what about if your neighbors, they were sent to detention facilities, 70 prisoners to a cell surrounded by alligators, forced to kneel and eat like an animal, sir? This is real, for those of you that are laughing. Look it up. This is real. This is real. And for you to say that we can't talk about politics, sir, is absolutely ridiculous considering the state of our country right now.
Thank you. I'll be right there. Yes, ma'am?
I kind of have, I have a two-part question.
Okay.
What was the reasoning for ending the use of 287G previously during that 2008 and 12 period? Why did you stop using it?
Well, it stopped because President Obama and Vice President Joe Biden ended all of those programs. The 18 task force in the country were ended by that administration. That's when it stopped.
Okay. All right, so can I ask, what avenue is in place to end the use? Should it be determined that it's a poor use of tax dollars and ineffective for the taxpayers of this county?
I didn't, try it again?
What avenue is in place for you to end the use of 287G? Now, if it doesn't work out, that's the easiest way to say it.
Yes, a 30-day notice. Thirty, 30-day notice and the contract ends. Is that right, Daniel? He said, yes, sir. Tell them who you are, Mike.
My name's Mike, Mike Hagan. I live in Rose Hill. And I've known PJ when he had more hair than I do. Okay? So it's been a long time.
Been a while.
You've been sheriff since, since I got here, okay? I think the point, whether you believe in what ICE is doing or national levels, doesn't matter. What matters is what's happening here, and what you can control and which you can't. The department being part of that 287G program gives some control here. Otherwise, you've got no control here. ICE can come down and do what they want. You can say, well, we have access to computer systems, which you don't have access to is thinking and plans, okay? Agencies have thinking and plans. You don't have access to that unless you're part of this program. It's not going to be a case, I don't believe, knowing PJ as long as I have, that it's not going to be a case of where all of a sudden, they're going to invite a whole bunch of ICE people down here indiscriminately to do things. That's not the way this department has ever operated.
Right.
And I think the other part that you need to know is, he and I just talked a few minutes ago... Pardon? He and I talked a little while ago, I remember, years ago, three Eastern Europeans were arrested, okay? And every one of them, they were up to something. Every one of them had three or four IDs, okay? Separate identities. Talked to ICE, turned them loose, they wouldn't even pick them up. Under this program, and they're not the only ones down here, I'd like you to comment on that, they're not the only ones down here, he'll have the ability to look into that further himself. Because believe me, I know we all say it's targeted, and that may be, but we have other problems here that need to be addressed, and, and I believe that'll give him an opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Mike. His question was to help identify some of the other countries that are represented in Beaufort County, and that representation is quite large. Russia, China, Iran, and I can just keep on going down, yes, ma'am, going down the list. So it's not about one country, it's about all the countries. And in order for us to be successful in this program, the 287G gives us a tool to do it. Yes, ma'am?
I want to contrast your earlier statement about your being at the table with the details of the interview that you made to Charleston's Post and Courier. That was very, very interesting, because you said, and I remember it well because it involved our, our stores right here in Beaufort County. You said, "I'm not going to go to Walmart, or to Sam's Club, or to Publix and check people's IDs." Well, I've got to be frank with you, Sheriff, that sounds like a lot of control that you have. You are going to be giving input into what you will and you won't do. I guess when I read that, I thought, wait a minute, he's going to have a lot of, he's going to say, yes, sir, yes, sir, because when ICE says do it, you'll do it. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. I know in '08, '12, we didn't go to Walmart, we didn't go to Sam's, we didn't go to Publix, we didn't go out and do any kind of mass inspection and ID checks. We didn't do it then, we're not doing it now. If they don't like the way we operate, then again, the MOA or MOU, whatever you want to call it, is coming this week, we'll read it, we'll look at it, we'll analyze it, and then we'll move, we'll move on from there. But stopping the program is a 30-day notice. 30-day notice, and look, there's no money attached to this program. There's no funding coming from the federal government and no funding coming from Beaufort County to the federal government. We didn't do it before, we're not doing it again. I appreciate your comment. Who, who has a question?
I think we both do.
Okay?
I want to ask, my question is, if you, if you join this thing, and some, and you pick somebody up, does it give you access to go nationwide to, to screen this guy, to find out where he's been?
Absolutely.
Then why aren't we doing it?
Well, that's what we're going to do. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I wanted to ask what measures you'll put in place to ensure that racial profiling does not occur within your department?
We do not allow any kind of racial profiling, never have. I've been in office 26 and a half years. It never has been done. We're not doing it, we're not starting now. It's a non-issue. Not doing it. Our policies are in place, we're nationally accredited, our policies are very clear, it's not allowed. It's not allowed in South Carolina, at all.
It's not allowed anywhere. So the two officers that will be part of the ICE department, what, what will you tell them? What measures will you have them embrace? If Beaufort County doesn't permit racial profiling now, can we count on those two officers to not racial profile?
Well, the reality to it is, they violate my policies, they won't work at Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. So, that, that goes for every employee that I have. Policies are policies. That's the written law of Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. Yes, sir?
CJ, I'm from Sun City, and I have three friends. One came from Spain, the other two came from Africa, and they waited six years, and each of them paid $5,000. Now, how do you think they feel? These people coming across the border?
I mean, I hear that every day. I mean, I talk to people every day that migrated to the United States legally, and it took some time, it took some money, but you know what? They're, they're offended as well that, that, and the, the offense there is that there are U.S. citizens that want to give them a pass on coming to this country illegally, but yet all the legal immigrants that came here and went through the process did it the right way. And you, and here's the thing, they did it the right way, congratulations to them, but everyone that's in this country illegally can do it the right way, they just need to start. And you know, and, and, and they got to start somewhere. What, what time is it?
Sheriff Tanner, I have a question. I hope I can phrase this the right way. When we're talking about all of the costs that may result from a seat at the table and the two extra officers, do you have any numbers, or can you give the best estimate on what illegal crime costs the county currently? Or what it costs to jail or house them currently? And the question is, would the reduction in illegal crime be offset, offset the cost of the two officers?
Well, if I, again, if I ran to jail, I mean, I can get those numbers for you, but if I ran to jail, I would have a, a clearer answer on that, but I don't know what that answer is because I don't run to jail. Thank goodness.
This is, this is also somewhat on the jail side, but detention priority, hypothetically, your officer arrests a DUI, that person is undocumented. Where are they detained? Who takes the priority? Is it a caseload on the 14th District, or does that go to, does that person go to ICE first?
If they're, if they're arrested by a deputy or city police officer, or highway patrolman, or a, you know, a security officer in a gated community, they go to the Beaufort County Jail, and then jail runs a check on them. If they're not in NCIC, they notify ICE, ICE runs a check on them. If they're, if they're here illegally, ICE sends a, you wrote a great article, did y'all read the Alon Paquette article? All right, well, did y'all just go back and read that, there's your answer? I'll be right back. This, this lady's arms going to sleep.
It sure is. I understand from the federal level that there is a quota that they're trying to meet. That being said, where do you sit with that? Since you're going to be part of that program, are you not going to be required also to get a head count here?
I'll tell you again, I don't work for the federal government. I don't know, I don't know anything about a quota program. I can tell you that it's not happening in Beaufort County. I can tell you that. All right. Oh, here you go, here you go. Excuse me.
My Sheriff. My, my name is George Kanek. I'm a former co-chair of the Low Country Immigration Coalition, and I'd like to ask the question, but first, I'd like to put it in context. Tanner, Tanner, did you all come here, your ancestors, over the years, from different countries? You don't, you don't?
I'm assuming so.
You're assuming so. Well, that's very good.
That's long before I was born.
Because I think it's, it's thrilling that the idea that, you know, people come here, land in New York City, they see the torch from the Lady of Liberty, and they say, "I want just to have another life. I want to have an American dream." Well, apparently, the Tanners achieved that dream over the years.
Do you have a question?
And, and, and in fact, you have a sheriff here for this Low Country for 26 years, so immigrants can be very, very good. We are all immigrants, remember that, unless there is indigenous people. So, in that, in that... So, in that, in that context, in that...
You want arm wrestling for the mic?
Does that make you any more sympathetic to getting rid of 287G?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes.
My arm is also going to be 20 minutes back there. So, my question to you is, first of all, let me tell you that in 2020, the Cato Institute, which is one of the most conservative think-things, found that there was no measurable impact on public safety when engaging in 287G agreements. So, you, you were sheriff back when 287G was enacted, right, here in Beaufort? Can you tell us the actual numbers of how 287G measurably impacted public safety here in Beaufort County, and what did those numbers look like? Can you give us those numbers?
I don't, I don't have any numbers to give you, that's not a part of...
I think you should, if you were already part of that program.
No, I mean, if you want numbers, I mean, Daniel's got some numbers, and he's more than glad to share.
I think the community wants to see them.
And that was based on, I mean, I'll give the numbers to the media, and then y'all can publicize those numbers, but I'll have to go back and pull those numbers up.
Thank you.
Okay? Yeah, just pass it over there. We got, we got four minutes.
Seven minutes.
Oh, seven? Okay, thank you.
Hi, Sheriff Tanner. Following up kind of on Dulce's question and the, as far as the numbers go, when Beaufort County participated in 287G in 2008 and 2012, do you believe that it did make the community safer during those times?
I, I, I know it made the community safer.
Yeah, I'm not arguing that. I don't argue with anything that the police does, I want you guys to fight crime and keep us safe. That's the whole gist of it, right? The, your office publishes an NIBRS report, which is the National Incident-Based Reporting System, every year, and it doesn't include, unfortunately, anything about 287G, race, immigration status, or any of those statistics that would kind of help us gauge the transparency if there is racial profiling going on.
You're talking about if there's racial profiling going on in Beaufort County?
Correct, with the arrests, right? Like, if there's a disproportionate number of Hispanics versus blacks versus Asians being arrested versus whites, or et cetera.
It's not happening in that sheriff's office. I can't speak for other agencies.
Right, I just, the only thing I have is numbers, right? So, I have printed all the, the numbers from the county reports. Essentially, you guys classify Group A offenses, correct, as reports that are like murder, assault, burglary, theft, drug offenses, weapons violations? Correct?
You're reading the report.
Okay.
I don't have it.
Um, during, I guess, I'm just going to read some numbers out. So, in 2010, there was 9,646 Group A offenses. In 2011, this was during the program, 9,044, and in 2012, 8,618. There's been a 10% drop in those final three years of the program of crime, which is a good thing, right? One could argue that 287G was working, but if that were true, we'd expect crime to rise if the program had ended. Instead, the opposite had happened. In 2013, after the program had ended, Group A offenses have dropped to 7,879, and by 2024, last year, they fell again to 5,416. That's a 31% drop over 11 years, considering that the population has grown over 163,000 residents, which, to be honest, your reports also fail to mention, they never account for population growth, which I feel like is important to consider. So, my question is, if crime is down and arrests remain high, because you guys are great at arresting people, and our population has grown, why is Beaufort County still being framed as unsafe and needing this program? And if this is being reintroduced in the name of public safety, what data, and you already said you don't have the data, I think you should get it, proves that we need it now? Or is the real public safety issue that the country doesn't have the full picture at all of each individual? And when, if your office can, release the full demographic data of race, et cetera, immigration status, so that residents and taxpayers can see for themselves and justify if this program is working effectively?
So, you said the last, was it the last three years?
Of the program.
That has dropped dramatically?
No, the last three years of the program, it dropped 10%.
No, I'm talking about the last three years.
Oh, of this year? Of, from 2020, or 2021 to 2024?
Yeah.
I don't have that number, I calculated from 2013 to 2024. I can do the math for you, I have the numbers here, but I don't want to take up anyone else's time. Can you answer the question?
What was the question?
If...
I mean, I heard a lot, but I didn't, I don't know if I understand the question.
I don't, I don't want to take anyone else's time, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Sheriff, Sheriff, you have four minutes.
I got this young man back here, he's about to lose his arm, hold on.
Sheriff, you have four minutes.
Okay.
Two questions.
It sounds to me that this program is just going to impact people that are all, have already under suspicion of criminal activity, that, can you confirm that? I mean, the way that it sounded to me is, it's almost like I have a suspect here for committing a crime, and then I need real-time information. Is that what this, is it just that simple?
It's just that simple.
My alarm will go off.
I mean, look, here, here's the thing that harms folks more than anything, when you watch the national media and you, and you Google things, and you start looking at Facebook and all the other stuff, and you start hearing all these stories, it, it, it's not fair to you, because you're making an assessment based on something that's not a reality here in South Carolina or in Beaufort County. So, these programs work. These programs work for a reason, and the reason these programs are successful and the reason we use them, because it, it protects the homeland that we live in. Don't make excuses for making sure, or, or, or ask law enforcement not to do their job. If you're asking law enforcement not to enforce immigration law, then you want law enforcement to stop working murder cases and armed robberies and sexual assault cases? Where does it stop? If this is going to start here, where are you going to stop? Is it okay to drive drunk? Is it okay to be a pedophile and take advantage of young children? Where, where does it stop? So, hey, draw the, draw the line, but, but draw the line with an understanding that law enforcement officers, our role is to enforce the law. And that's what we do, and we do it fairly, and we do it consistently.
I would suggest one more question.
One more.
And then I'll stop.
Thank you, thank you. Pastor June, I'm from Christ Lutheran Church. Met you before. If a person calls in a crime, if they, if they're, you know, domestic violence, or if they are, that's probably for him, if, if they call in a crime, can this officer that is working on 287G, under the 287G thing, look up the person who's called the crime in? Can they look up their immigration status?
Yes, ma'am, but are, are you familiar with U-Visa process?
Yes, right.
Okay, and so, if you're familiar with, can you explain what U-Visa is?
With what?
With the U-Visa process is?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so, U-Visa process is available for any immigrant who is here illegally if they're a victim of a delineated crime, all right? So long as they cooperate with law enforcement, they cooperate with the prosecution, their path to citizenship is made easier, all right? We get probably three U-Visa applications at the sheriff's office every single week. They run through my desk every single day, I review the U-Visa process, I confirm that they have cooperated with law enforcement, that they have cooperated with the prosecution, and then I pass it off to either the chief deputy or Sheriff Tanner for their signature, and then it goes about their business. So, I'm sure the immigration attorney has, has filed multiple U-Visa applications, he can attest to the fact that we have to certify as law enforcement officers that they have cooperated with the investigation and with the prosecution. So, there was a question on July 8th by an immigration attorney, that she had received an email from a client of hers that her house was shot up, and she had concerns about contacting law enforcement, and that immigration attorney didn't know what to say. And so, my advice is, I'm not an immigration attorney, but my advice would be to tell the illegal immigrant, the victim of this crime, to cooperate with law enforcement, right? You get a path to citizenship much easier through that U-Visa process. There she is, right there, right? Yes?
Yeah, and I just want, thank you.
I just want to, to let everybody know, because this is not from YouTube or Facebook, I'm an immigration lawyer, I deal with this every day. When we get the certification from the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office and we send that U-Visa application in, right now, it's going to take somewhere between 10 to 15 years for that person to get their legal status.
But they get three years?
And many and most of our clients are waiting five, 10, or more years to get legal status. So, we can't talk about this issue without talking about the politics of immigration. It's very easy to say, "You need to do it the right way," but when you don't know what you're talking about and you've conceded tonight, you don't know anything about immigration law, then that's when this gets very delicate.
Is the path to citizenship easier through the U-Visa process or another?
It's the start. But what we're seeing is that those, those people that are in this very long line are all vulnerable to removal. They're sitting in a line, they're doing it the right way, they're trying to do it the right way. We haven't had immigration reform, and they're all being vulnerable to removal. So, what do we tell the woman, the single mom with the two kids at home, who is scared to go to the police because she doesn't have her legal status, because she got the U-Visa from Beaufort County Sheriff's Office, but she doesn't have legal status yet, because it's taking immigration 15 years?
Okay.
And these are issues that, you have to know about this if you want to be a part of this program.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we have the room till 6:30. I want to thank the sheriff and his staff for taking time to come. And just a reminder, the library closes at 7, so we need to let them close up. Thank you for coming.